That piece of equipment will be going to Woodbury tomorrow for two months. The last job it was on, it was on for closer to three months. So that large equipment is not there usually. And that's not, I understand what they're saying, but it's not part of the conditional use permit. We just store that equipment there until from job site to job site. We're very strong on the seven to seven noise ordinance that's in place for the city of Minneapolis. If there's other activities going on there after that, when we're not there, we feel it's, if it's bothering somebody, they should call the police because we don't encourage any activity there, especially outside after seven at night. And I think as far as putting a gate, we're not interested in putting a gate in front of our property where vehicles enter. We're looking at it as no different than a community park or something. If somebody is making noise or doing something illegal there, they should call the police. We wouldn't expect the city defense in the park because somebody's doing something illegal there. And I don't know if you have any questions?
Commissioner, are there any questions? I have a question related to the hours of operation. So you're suggesting if there is any activity after 7:00 PM, it's employees choosing to be there at that time. Your understanding is that normal business hours would be somewhere between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM?
And I don't believe they're referring to my employees. They're, they're well aware of the noise ordinances, they're well aware of the idling ordinances, only because we have imposed them and taught them to do that. So as these ordinances come up to us, which we don't know all of them, but we adhere to them to the best of our ability. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Gisselman?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for you, sir. It seems to me that as part of the conditions that the staff is recommending as part of the conditional use permit, some of the terms of those conditions are hopefully meant to remedy, I think, some of the complaints that were mentioned today. But for example, one of the conditions under the conditional use permit, if it is approved, is that there'd be no automobile wrecking or dismantling allowed on the site. And so what we saw in the video, wouldn't you consider that to be in violation of that condition, once that condition is put in place?
Well, it's not an automotive, it's not an automobile, but I would agree that that is something that we're not going to do, and we're not going to do on a regular basis.
And then I guess furthermore, it talks about the, the conditions talk about the recycling use, and it says the recycling shall be performed in a fully enclosed building, except that paper and cardboard can be stored in fully enclosed containers or trailers outside. And so it seems like all the recycling operation that's being proposed will have to happen indoors in the first place, and that these containers outside, we saw a picture of a container that wasn't fully enclosed.
Correct.
But these conditions say that they would be fully enclosed, so we presume that if this were approved today, that those are the, those are the kinds of things you'd be expected to follow.
Right. And storage, unless I'm wrong, is 48 hours or longer. Anything under 48 hours is not storage. So would some of that traffic be there? Yes, but it is enclosed as far as they had to climb up a big hill, trespass, look over the fence down into that container. It's not visible from the street or from the residence.
But I'm really more so though focusing on some of the noise-related complaints because obviously that's a, you know, that presents a significant livability issue, especially in the summertime. But it, to me, again, it seems that these conditions, if your intent is to follow them, that these conditions are going to remedy the problems, at least some of the problems that were, that were mentioned today. Would you agree with that?
I would like to note that there were several complaints and turned in and reported, and they were unfounded. So I don't know, you know, when they come knocking on my door and they do their inspections, there's nothing wrong.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then I did have one question for you, Aaron. Can we, I guess the first, two questions. Can we regulate the hours? Do we have a mechanism to do that? Can we, for example, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some, there's going to be some permitted uses on the site after certain hours, but can we be specific and say that no loading or unloading can happen outside of Monday through Friday from eight to five? I mean, do we, do we have that tool at our fingertips here? And then the other question was just that, I mean, is there, do you have any information about there being a demonstrated lack of following the rules for this property? I don't know if you have that information or not.
All right. Commissioner, I guess one, I want to just mention, can we limit the hours of operation? And this is an aspect that is now handled in our licensing chapters, but Jason, is this something that we can with the conditional use permit limit today?
Commissioners, we generally need to be cautious about limiting hours of operation. Industrial uses, of course, can have three shifts of employees. Through a conditional use permit, if there are issues with the site that you think just simply cannot be mitigated through conditions of approval, and the conditional use permit is simply not approvable but for restrictions on the hours of operation, then those kinds of restrictions would be your sort of logical last resort, short of a denial. So I would say that it's within your authority, but be cautious about going that route.
And then to your second question about lack of following the rules, there's adequate notes to, sometimes comprehensive notes in our system in terms of the dialogue between inspectors and the applicant. And there's, I guess my summing up of the violations on page three of the report were sometimes more back and forth for one of the elements than others. Some were just quickly closed, but a couple of them, there was some re-inspections to make sure that they were in compliance. So it, it wasn't as easy as an inspector going out and then it being resolved. Some of them did take time in monitoring.
Commissioner Kronzer? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Gisselman, are you finished? Okay.
Yeah, Aaron, a couple of follow-up questions. Is it true that storage is defined as something longer than 48 hours?
That, I'm not aware of it being in the code, and I can do a quick search right here, but I am, that time element was something that I hadn't seen or was aware of from the zoning code standpoint.
Okay, and then in condition number two of the conditional use permit, it talks about automobile wrecking. Is that wrecking in general, and does that wrecking matter if it's inside or outside? Could they wreck inside, under this condition?
No. The, there's the recycling use, and then there's the scrap facility or scrap use, and that's where the dismantling of vehicles can take place. And there's no, within the building for recycling use, it's just, it's just something that is not allowed for recycling.
So in a recycling facility, dismantling is not allowed?
Correct.
Period?
Period.
Inside, outside, with a crane, without a crane, with a chainsaw, it's not allowed? Okay, thank you.
Well, we, we closed the public hearing now. I guess, well, let's, first, Commissioner Gisselman, do you have another question?
Just want to follow a question, Aaron, for clarification. So the wrecking and dismantling, I mean, is it wrecking and dismantling anything of any kind, or is it really limited specifically to automobiles? I mean, could the requirements be that there can't be any wrecking or dismantling, period, and that we don't use the word automobile?
In going strictly by the definition in chapter 520, it focuses on automobile wrecking or dismantling for recycling, for being prohibited as part of recycling use.
Commissioners, I'd suggest that recycling by its nature is going to involve some sort of wrecking or dismantling of material, but the intent is that through both the enclosed building requirement and the vehicle wrecking issue, that it's supposed to create a fairly distinct line between a scrap yard and a recycling facility.
And it sounds like what we're saying is that this, any of this process is supposed to take place inside anyway?
Yes, that's correct. From some of the information, visual evidence submitted by the neighbor, it certainly looked like the property is currently not operating as a recycling facility and more like a scrap yard. I don't know when those pictures or video were taken, but that was not a recycling facility.
Commissioner Magrino, and then Commissioner Bender.
You said there are currently three uses, or currently two? You know what the other two uses are?
Currently, three uses, and that would be maintained, the recycling, warehousing, and production of, of like a limited production facility or production of some type of goods that was permitted in the I-2 and I-1 districts.
Okay. Because I kind of wondered, you know, the risk is sort of getting too much further into the weeds here, if there's some other term we could use in condition three there, maybe a little bit broader than recycling use, that maybe would address some of the concerns that the neighbors have about things being conducted outside. If there's something a little, you know, obviously, they're going to do things outside on the property, they're going to have to load things, they're going to have to bring things into the building, but if there's something a little bit more expansive than that, then I think we could probably put a lot of this to rest if we know what's happening in the building.
Sure. That was discussed. We were mindful of this being an industrial site and, and the different uses and things that need to happen with an industrial use and the variety of uses, and not want to prohibit the other portions of the establishment or the different establishments within here from being penalized by the recycling use. We realize that when looking at the outdoor storage, when inspectors do that review, that that would, that there will be a judgment call of if that, if those outdoor elements are part of the recycling use or not, are part of the other establishments that would be permitted and would have as strict of outdoor storage requirements. But I'm, I, I don't know, if Mr. Wenberg, if there is thoughts on prohibiting having stricter requirements for the other uses for this conditional use permit, I forward your thoughts.
Well, commissioners, in the definition of recycling, it refers to specific activities that maybe they're getting at. Commissioner Magrino, like shredding, milling, crushing, baling, packing, disassembling, if those are the kinds of things that you think would be more expansive and including in a condition of approval?
And I just want to mention the other, we worked hard with the applicant in both the greening and the placement of the outdoor storage, just to limit it, limit the visibility by, by the site improvements and where they, being concrete on where they would put things and where they would not. And so that was, that was trying to address the visible, the negative visual aspect of outdoor storage for the other uses that's taking place.
Mr. Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for everyone's patience with us as we rarely see industrial land use applications. So this has been really helpful discussion from staff. It sounds like part of what's happening is there are uses now that are not permitted, at least that wouldn't be permitted now, nor would be permitted under, if this U.P. is granted. Is that correct?
The recycling, the warehousing and production permitted, it'd be the recycling that they never gained the conditional use permit to allow to be at this location. Recycling use is a conditional use in the I-2 district, which is.
Or maybe it's better just to talk about future usage. So if in the future, there's sort of automobile disassembly and other things happening, those things are not allowed?
Correct.
Under this conditional use permit?
Correct.
And so what are the enforcement mechanisms that would be used to enforce those rules in the future?
Well, this, this whole project came out of enforcement. There, we work closely with our zoning enforcement colleagues, and it will require more, more site visits, more reviewing of the project site to make sure that they are in compliance with these requirements. It was, it took time to get to this point of, there were some elements I won't get into too far into the details, but if approved with these conditions or modified by, by the board and commission, we will, we will work and we'll have to work to enforce these conditions of approval that would be applied to these applications.
And Commissioner Rockwell?
Well, sorry, just quick clarification on Commissioner Bender's question. So if, so there are more site visits from zoning inspectors, are there fines if they're in, not in compliance?
For, yes, if, yes.
So Aaron? First condition, our site plan, says the site improvement should be completed by January 11th of 2018. That's pretty standard, two years. Is there a way we can reduce that time?
That has been done with other applications, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bender? Okay. Does someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendations for, A, the conditional use permit to allow a recycling facility with the three stated conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit with the three stated conditions. Is there anything anyone would like to modify on those conditions, or is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gisselman?
Well, I was, I was just going to add that I'm personally comfortable with this, particularly because of this language that talks about this recycling use being operated fully inside the building. And just now, when Councilmember Bender asked staff about, you know, future uses and things like automobile dismantling or wrecking, Mr. Hanauer said that that would not be allowed. And while he said that, the applicants themselves were nodding their heads. So it seems like everybody is on the same page, and it now comes down to, I guess, an enforcement issue that hopefully isn't going to be an issue.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion and a second, so please call the roll.
Bender?
Hi.
Gignan?
Hi.
Gisselman?
Hi.
Kronzer?
Hi.
Magrino?
Hi.
Bracklow?
Hi.
Slack?
Hi.
Seven zero.
And we have item B, the site plan review. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
I'll continue and make a motion to approve staff recommendation for the site plan approval with the 13 stated conditions with a modification to the first condition, where the site improvements to be completed by January 11th, 2017, so one year from today.
All right, is there a second there? Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? I'll just add, and it appears that our neighbors who testified have already left, but I live in this general area too, and am aware of some of the negative impacts of this facility. I am pretty confident that the 13 conditions of this site plan approval and three conditions of the conditional use permit will go a long way to address. It's my understanding there have been some activities taking place here that actually aren't even allowed in the I-2 district, so I just want to make sure that everyone, including the neighbors, are aware that if they see any of that, they can certainly call the city and, and those issues can be addressed. But I do think the landscaping and screening that's going to be provided and just memorializing some of these requirements, that activities take place in enclosed buildings, that there aren't inoperable vehicles sitting all over the place, I think will, will help make this facility a better neighbor. So if there's no further discussion, or please call the roll.
Slack?
Hi.
Bracklow?
Hi.
Magrino?
Hi.
Kronzer?
Hi.
Gisselman?
Hi.
Bender?
Hi.
Seven zero.
All right, then that motion carries. Our next item of business is item four, the Amp House at 3255 Garfield Avenue South. And Lisa Steiner with his staff.
There are four applications before you for the property at 3255 Garfield Avenue South. Some background on the site, it's currently zoned R2B, a lot area, it's a little over 11,000 square feet. It's in the Lyndale neighborhood. It's designated future land use in the conference of plan as urban neighborhood. It's located one block from a community corridor, which is Lyndale. It's kitty corner from Painter Park. The surrounding area is generally residential, the mix of densities along the west side of Garfield is mostly multifamily housing, and then along the east side of Garfield on this block is primarily single family with a few multifamily buildings as well. Some history on the property, the existing building was used as a, was built in, I think, 1911 or 1916, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it was used as a utility substation until the 1990s, and since then, the brick building has been vacant. In 1996, the neighborhood group worked with the owner, Excel, to put up these murals over the boarded windows, and that's been in place for now 20 years, and dubbed it the Garfield Aquarium because the murals are fish. The applicant's proposal is to convert that existing vacant building into four dwelling units, as well as an approximately 900 square foot co-working office space. Also, they would be constructing a three-stall garage at the rear of the property, which meets all of our zoning requirements for garages. There would be a small addition that would be constructed along the north elevation of the existing building that would provide access to three of the dwelling units, and then the fourth dwelling unit would be accessed from a separate door towards the rear of the building. The applications that are required for the project, first is a rezoning from the R2B district to the OR1 district. Second is a conditional use permit to increase maximum height from their permitted two and a half stories or 35 feet, whichever is less, to three stories, 33 feet, nine inches. There's also two variances for the front yards, which are along Garfield and 33rd. So I'll go through each one of those. So the rezoning, the applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to the OR1 neighborhood office residence district, which is intended to be a small-scale mixed-use environment of low to moderate density dwellings and office uses. The staff analysis for the rezoning can be found on pages three to five of the staff report. The property is designated as urban neighborhood in the conference of plan, as I mentioned. These areas are predominantly residential, but are typically lower density and are not intended to accommodate significant new density or growth. Use can, urban neighborhoods can include small-scale uses scattered throughout. As I mentioned, also, Lyndale Avenue is a designated community quarter and is only a block from the site. As far as the finding related to the public interest, staff found that with the existing building on site, the property is limited in its potential reuse options. Rezoning to OR1 would allow for more potential uses on the site, but because OR1 is still a fairly restrictive zoning district, this rezoning would not drastically alter the allowed form of future development on the site, potential future development on the site. The property on the east side of Garfield is all zoned R2B, as well as mostly to the east and Painter Park. However, across the street from the subject property, the west side of Garfield is all zoned R4, and then along Lyndale Avenue, there's a mix of commercial and office residential Permitted uses, as you'll see in this table, in the R2B district include single-family dwellings, small community residential facilities, community gardens, parks, places of assembly, child care centers, and small market gardens. And rezoning to OR1 would allow multifamily dwellings, offices, theaters, educational arts centers, preschools, and then some additional conditional use permit, or conditional uses which would require a conditional use permit that would come before planning commission. Staff found that while some reasonable uses do exist in R2B, the likelihood that the existing building would be repurposed for those uses is highly unlikely, and therefore we find that rezoning to OR1 would support the retention of the existing building as it provides more adaptive reuse options for the building. Also, although the property is zoned residentially, it has never been used residentially. It's been zoned R2B since at least 1975. It, as I said before, was a utility substation for over 80 years and has been vacant ever since. Those properties that I mentioned on the west side of Garfield that are zoned R4 were rezoned to R4 just recently in 2010 as part of the Midtown Greenway rezoning study, and the boundary was Garfield Avenue, so that's why this property was not considered as part of that. The vast majority of properties in this surrounding area were built in the early 20th century, so there's not been a significant change in the area, as noted in number five. So staff recommendation based on that analysis, we recommend that you approve the application for rezoning to OR1. And then moving on to the conditional use permit to increase maximum height, so the existing building is two stories or 26 feet, the applicant is proposing to construct a rooftop greenhouse, which per the zoning code definition would be a third story to the building. So although the overall height would still be below the maximum 35 feet, the rooftop addition, because it's three stories, requires the conditional use permit to increase maximum height. Staff would note that this would be taller than the majority of properties in the area, but with the condition of approval that the height and area be limited to the roughly 500 square foot rooftop greenhouse addition, and the height that is proposed, which is less than the 35 feet, it was a reasonable, and it was reasonable and met the findings for this conditional use permit to increase maximum height. So again, we're recommending that with one condition, or with two conditions. And then finally, the variances, there's two front yard variances that are being requested. The first is along Garfield Avenue, which is from the approximately 31 feet, which is set by the established property to the north, to, and the variance request is to zero feet for a proposed stair, corner stairway and entrance landing to the property to reduce. And then the second variance is along the south side of the property, that's also a front yard because the adjacent property to the east across the alley, their front yard face is 33rd, so this is a front yard. So that request is from the required 15 feet to zero feet for a patio. Talking about the Garfield, that just shows the established variance line, so the required front yard's 31 feet. Stairs and entrance landings have specific limits. If they're going to be allowed as a permitted obstruction in a required front yard, that limit is eight feet, and then for stairs, and then entrance landings can be up to 32 square feet. The proposed stairway on either side of the corner is between 20 and 25 feet in width, and then the landing is 350 square feet. So that is a significant increase from what's allowed as a permitted obstruction in the front yard. Just the three findings for a variance, there's more analysis in the staff report, but essentially staff did not find that there is any practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance related to the front yard. There were no unique circumstances that were requiring the larger than permitted stairs and entrance landing. While generally reasonable, required yards are intended to be unobstructed, unobstructed from the ground to the sky, and the applicant has other options such as building a smaller stair and entrance patio that would comply with the permitted obstructions. stair and entrance patio that would comply with the permitted obstructions. Also, staff noted that the proposed stairway and entrance landing would alter the character of the front yards. On this block face, the block face is primarily residential in character with small stairways and walkways, and this, the proposed stairway and entrance landing is essentially a public space, which is out of character with the residential nature of the block. So moving on, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny that variance. And then moving on to the variance along 33rd, so the required front yard's 15 feet, as I noted, and the applicant is proposing, there's an existing areaway in this location, it's about 150 square feet, and he's proposing to essentially add a metal grate to the top of the areaway, and then extend the patio to the rear property line. And so that would create a, I think it's seven feet by 56-foot patio, and that is in the front yard of, that is set by that neighbor that faces 33rd. So similarly, staff found that there were no practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance. As you would have noted on the site plan, there's over 5,000 square feet of open space on the north side of the property where a patio or outdoor living could take place. There's no necessity to placing it along the south edge, and it is also similarly to the other front yard variance, not reasonable in the front yard of that adjacent property, and it could significantly impact that neighbor. So again, staff is recommending denial of that variance along 33rd as well. Public comments, a number of public comments were received that you should have in your packet. There were many...